Finally.
Thank you.
Finally, after how long?
Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Would everyone please rise? And Pastor Doug Pratt, with the first responders in charge, could you please come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council members, Mr. City Manager and staff. I'm honored to be given this invitation to pray for you, and so I'd like to do so now. Good morning, Heavenly Father, and thank you for this new day you've created. How can we begin without a word of thanks and gratitude in our hearts for all our blessings? Our blessings of home and families and health, and, Lord, what a wonderful community you've allowed us to live in, and what a great country, the land of the free, we are a part of. We ask you, Lord, to be with our community just to the north, our sister city, and bring about justice from the terrible shootings that occurred there a few days ago. We do pray for our first responders, that our law enforcement and firefighters and others might be vigilant in their tasks and strengthened as they protect and serve us. We, oh, Lord, look at the world around us, so filled with rancor and division and hostility, and certainly with partisanship, and, Lord, we don't want to be that kind of community, nor do we want this council to be riven apart by those differences. But rather, I pray that you grant to this meeting and all the meetings that follow, this body the grace and the ability to listen to one another, to speak frankly, to respect each other, and to have wisdom to guide and direct us. Lord, we pray for the business of the day, that even the seemingly mundane matters, which affect someone's lives, might be done wisely and carefully and effectively. Bless this community, oh, Lord, and bless America, we pray. I ask this in the name of the God whom I love and serve. Amen.
Amen.
Councilman Schlaacka, could you please lead us in a pledge of allegiance?
Of your honor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Schlaacka.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
Councilman Gibson.
Here.
Councilman Longheart.
Here. All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Mayor.
All right, we are to public comment on agenda items. Any member of the public wishing to speak at this time on any agenda item, and agenda item only, please come forward.
Good morning, my name's Derry Haynes, and I'm here to represent the new Southwest Florida Jaguar Club. We're trying very hard to get a club started here to show off Jaguar cars, and we're here to ask for permission to have an event, so thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Bonnie Widdamore, and I'm here representing the Historical Society. We're planning a new fun event called Pirate's Ball, right down on the river by the park, which is, as you've been telling us for months, is one of our anchors. It's one of the things we need to promote, so I'm requesting you to support our request to have a Pirate's Ball.
Thank you very much. An "R."
"R."
Whatever, whatever. Come on.
I'm Dan Pano, CGT Kayaks, right down by Riverside Park also, and an "R" to all. I'd like to invite everybody and offer my support for the agenda item number, or E, for the Pirate's Ball, and also to say that Riverside Park is still open and a wonderful place to visit, even though the construction's down there, and I invite everybody to come down. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi. Hi, good morning. My name is Kate Hahn. I'm the owner of Momentum Brew House, and I'm here because we also have an event permitted for a special event. Our one-year anniversary is coming up next month, and we'd like the opportunity to celebrate with the community, so we put in and would hope that you could approve our permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, it is a beautiful day in Bonita. I have a little question on 7A. They want to get TDC tax money to improve Bay Park North Beach Park. Well, as far as I know, there is no such place as there is a Beach Park North and a Bay Park North, but is this for both parks, or which park is this for? And I haven't been able to find out. I've tried to find out from the Parks Department, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and go on with the proclamations and presentations. This time, would, let's see, Scott's not here, so would, Gene, would you come forward, please? Defazio. There you go. Bam. Hello.
Hello.
How you doing?
Good.
You? This is something we do for all our employees here that are able to tolerate us for at least five years or more, which is quite the feat. I tell you, that's why we get the big frame here. Anyway, "For Five Years of Service Presented to Gene Defazio as the 12th Day of October 2015, in appreciation and recognition for your five years of public service to the City of Bonita Springs, Florida." Gene, thank you so much for everything you do. Everyone, please give Gene a hand. Ooh, Christopher Campbell. I've been waiting for this a long time. Ten whole years. Good to see you. He's very big. Chris has been, I gotta tell you what, there are certain people in the community that just make Bonita Springs what they are. Chris is one of them. Thank you so much for everything you do. It's amazing what the personalities involved do for our community. You've got a great one. It's such a pleasure to work with you, so thank you so much. In ten years of service, it seems like longer than that, doesn't it? I mean that in the best way possible. So remember that. Anyway, "Presented to Christopher Campbell as of the 17th day of October 2015, in appreciation and recognition for your ten years of public service to the City of Bonita Springs." Chris, on behalf of the City of Bonita Springs and everyone, thank you so much. Nicely done.
I can wait, I can wait. Here's the picture.
See, I told you. All right, this is for Kathy McGrath. Kathy, would you please come forward? She goes out the door. What? You're gonna come up here sooner or later, anyway.
I didn't even know this was on the agenda.
Okay, it isn't. Public comment, would anyone wishing to come forward, please? You would come then. Like, come on up here. We'll make it short and sweet, just like you. Kathy and I have known each other a long, long time, right? A long time.
Since he rode his bicycle on Old Forty-One, you know, when he was a little boy.
Okay, no, that was yesterday. But no, our families have known each other for a long time. We've seen a lot of things in Bonita Springs, so this is a real pleasure because you've done so much for our community. And as this is evidenced, the City of Bonita Springs congratulates Kathy McGrath on receiving the 2015 Bonita Springs Citizen of the Year Award. I can't think of anyone who would really epitomize that more than you, and really, you're just a prime example of everything that this is about. So everyone, please give Kathy a hand. Thank you so much.
I was so humbled when I heard this. I mean, all you have to do is look at the list of my predecessors, and I just don't think I'm in their category, and like I've said before, I have received much more than I've given with all my volunteer work. And let me tell you something, the staff here in the city is par none. You can't find it anywhere else. They're family. They're wonderful. They all give 150%. We're fortunate. I've seen a lot of changes in Bonita. To me, they're all for the better. Just as our revitalization, it's gonna get worse before it gets better, but it's gonna be wonderful, so let's all help make it work. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Kathy. Can everybody gather around here for Kathy here?
Perfect.
Kathy and Hermanians.
Yeah, right.
You're welcome.
Except Janet. The rest of us will be her minions.
Oh, okay. And we've got another one here. It says, "Recognition of Finance Staff on Being Awarded Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting."
Yes, good morning. Anne Wright, Finance Director, and it's my pleasure to let you know that last week we were notified by the Government Finance Officers Association that our September 30, 2014 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report qualified for recognition. And this is a recognition and award that the city has received. This is the sixth consecutive time. It is referred to as the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, and it's the highest level of recognition that you can achieve for financial reporting in the governmental entity. So I'm very proud of that and proud of the staff, and at this time, I would like to recognize the staff who are responsible for all the effort going into this presentation of our finances. Christina Baller, Supervising Accountant, and she is gonna stand, yes. Clara Fetti, Senior Accountant. Tony Gambino, Accounting Clerk. Melissa Stout, Accounting Technician, and Brenda Reitz is not available this morning. I'd like to recognize them for all their efforts. Thank you.
Good deal. Okay, and then next on our list here is a presentation by my good friend Kevin Rann. Mayor Kevin Rann, would you please come forward? From the City of Sanibel, great city of Sanibel. Everybody, give him a hand here, please. Welcome to Bonita Springs.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor, City Council Members, City Attorney, City Manager, Clerk. I appreciate it. Kevin Rann for the record, Mayor of Sanibel. May I approach and give these out, sir?
Absolutely. Why don't you let him, there you go.
This morning, I had the opportunity to come before you. It's been great working with the five mayors as we continue to look at Lee County and all the issues associated with Lee County. In the past, I've come here before looking for cooperation and collaboration on water quality issues. I'm here for the same reason, once again. We were presented with a unique opportunity from a gentleman that has more institutional knowledge on local issues and regional issues and state issues. Used to work for the Water Management District, first as a board member and then as the executive director. His name is Dan DeLeese. Dan approached us about a month and a half ago. He'd left the Water Management District. I called up to the Governor's Office and wanted to make sure the departure was on good terms. We had conversations about potentially hiring him. Certainly got good accolades. It was just a change, new management coming in, new staff coming in. It was what it was. The opportunity here is Mr. DeLeese has approached us, Lee County, as well as the municipalities, looking to have two separate contracts. As you can imagine, the BOCC wants to stand on their own, and the remaining six municipalities are trying to do something together. BOCC will commit to no more than $30,000 in this project. He's looking for a total of 50. Their project will be 30, ours will be 20. Today, my request is really for an item not to exceed $2,500, and let me explain the reasons why Mr. DeLeese is so unique. We put together a white paper not long ago identifying all the various challenges we have on water quality issues. And while everyone up here can talk about moving water south, and that's the ideal situation, we have many roadblocks in front of us relative to the land that everyone wanted to acquire south. There was a 20-year leaseback provision, so we couldn't do anything for year 21, and many other impediments. However, C-43 is something we've advocated for, for a number of years. And although I won't be here and say that C-43 will actually be the storage capacity we'd like it to for the high-flow issues, but I've been in office nine years. Seven of the nine years, we've had water quality issues. Six of the seven were low-flow issues. Okay, so the salinity that we have, I've been to all the municipalities with the exception of Estero so far. So if you want to go to Cape Coral, you look at their canals, you'll see some green slime in their canals. That's for salinity. You go over to the river in Fort Myers, that's salinity. You go over to the beach, whether our beach or Fort Myers, that's salinity. Your own beach in Estero. So the need for C-43 is actually to store water, and then when we need water and the low-flow issues, to actually get it. That's the reason for it. The challenge we have in front of us is we need $300 million by the year 2020. Okay? We have our own advocate and lobbyist up in Tallahassee. They certainly know the issues that we have, but nobody has the unique institutional knowledge that Mr. DeLeese has. No one knows the appropriations area, and his job and scope is very defined on what he'll do. It's a one-time contract, measured based on the success. He gets money, we might have another conversation. He doesn't, we all are out a few dollars. But to me, having worked with him, knowing the knowledge he has, and someone on a daily basis to knock on doors at appropriations and continue to remind them how important C-43 is, it's a partnership, local, regional, state, and federal. Water quality issues are not going to go away unless everybody comes together as one village, and that's really what we're looking for. It's been an honor to work with all the mayors and all the councils, because quite frankly, we are trying to make a difference. We understand how important water quality is relative to our economy, whether it's tourism, whether it's real estate, or the trickle-down effect. So this ask today, and I've gone around to other municipalities, and I'm happy to say that so far, four of the municipalities have agreed to support this initiative. Again, if you don't, that's your prerogative, and I respect that. But it sends a statement, like we have in the past, that all municipalities are together as Lee County, trying to do this initiative. It also allows us to leverage. I do plan on seeing Congressman Clausen. He and I have talked about water quality and a lot of issues. I'll be up to the federal government. So we're gonna need to go in many people's pockets, not just the state. But this is certainly an important attribute. They've started some funding with this initiative, but we have a big task in front of us. There's a lot of challenges with the budget associated with Medicare and some of the things the state has to deal with. But in a $79 billion budget, there's someone that sits on the Ecosystem Task Force, which is like the equivalent of an MPO, so I sit on a task force with local, state, and federal leaders on water quality issues. I will certainly continue to advocate for C-43 and many other projects. The ask is real simple today. It's to work with our city manager and your city manager. We have a contract together. If there's any items in the contract, it's really just the scope of his responsibilities, very defined, very detailed. If there's any changes you'd like to make, by all means, we will collect the money from all the municipalities. We will pay Mr. DeLeese. There's an actual timeframe when he gets his payments. But that's really the ask today, and I'll answer any questions you might have of me.
All right. Kevin, thank you very much, and Kevin's right. I gotta tell you, no one has worked harder on these issues than Mayor Wayne has. He knows them frontwards and backwards. I think this is a really good thing to do. And he's right, we have, the cities have been speaking with one voice. There's so much more power in that. And especially for this one item right here, I think this is specific in water quality, but it's also specific to this one particular deal with the Kalusatchi River and that reservoir. So, Council, do you have any questions for Kevin, or any comments?
Yeah, probably just a comment, Kevin. It makes me think back to a couple of years ago when the Lake Okochobee water releases started, and, you know, I saw you over on the East Coast. I think we were in Stewart, but sitting there in that hot room all day long, and you have, and you weren't, you had already been well on your way there and deeply involved. I've seen you out at Sanibel. I've seen you at Ding Darling. I've seen you a lot of places, so I commend your efforts and support this, and you wholeheartedly, so keep up the good work, buddy. Keep it up.
I appreciate it. It's been an honor, honestly, and I always tell people, a simple story. I remember when I was asked by our council to go to a water management meeting. It was downtown with people from the county, Water Management District, Army Corps of Engineers. I walk in the room, and it's myself and Commissioner Hall at the time. And she turns in the middle of the meeting and says to me, "Mayor Wayne, why don't you run with this?" I'm like, "Okay." Why am I getting the ball here? I've been throwing a pass. I'm the quarterback. Well, six weeks, unfortunately, Tammy got indicted. I've been the spokesperson. It's been an honor, honestly, to go around this community. It's been an honor to go to Washington. Congressman Clausen's a friend. Congressman Raydo, when he was there, was a friend, and we've gotten to know people. I do believe we're making a difference, and I do believe that this is something that our community needs. It's honestly been very nice to talk about what the community needs, and the mayor couldn't be more on point. We, as mayors, sit together, talk about the exact issues that we have for this county. The six of us combined make up more than 50% of this county. We certainly are on the same page. The nice thing about local government, we put all the partisan stuff aside. It doesn't matter what party you're in, RDI, it doesn't matter. We talk about what's best for this community, and that's why we have the utmost respect, but I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Carl, do you see any problems with this? Are you okay?
We're ready to go, sir, if the council wants.
Ready to go?
Yep.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
And that's to participate with $2,500?
Second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Hey, come back again sometime. By the way, I'm gonna be at by Sanibel. I got this little project I want you guys to chip in on.
Listen, you know, it's always a pleasure. The nice thing is that tonight, when I go to Estero, I can say I have five municipalities, but I wouldn't want to be Mayor Beto's. Thank you very much.
I say that every day. No, I don't. Didn't say that. That didn't happen. Okay, Item G. Hans. Oh, no. Did I skip someone? No, I didn't.
No, no, no. Hans will be coming up.
You're not Hans.
No. I'm Nicole Perino, your Parks and Recreation Director. I just wanted to give you a little background on this first. Staff, the Parks Department was directed in the last strategic planning meeting that we had to look at additional recreational water access to certain areas in the city that we were lacking a little bit. So what we did was hired Hans Wilson and Associates to basically update a study. They had done a study for us in the past, but it was looking at other type of accesses, not the smaller ones that we're looking at now. So what we had him do was tasked him to look at other areas and to rank those areas in terms of, is this viable? Is this feasible to do? So Hans will come up and go through what the study found out, where we're kind of at in this process, and then what we're looking at from you is how you would like us to proceed with this information in terms of if it's something you want us to do, us to look for funding or figure out funding, because there are options in terms of grants to get some funding as well for a lot of these projects, one being TDC, because they are on the beach and shoreline, so we can apply for funding for specific projects. So I will let Hans take it over.
Good.
For the record, my name is Hans Wilson. I'm a professional engineer here in Lee County. Thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation. We don't normally get that. Usually, we turn in the report, and then we don't hear anything for months, days, sometimes years. This project is, we define it as the Water Access Feasibility Study. We were engaged by the city to take a look at opportunities for water access. Uh-oh. There we go. There we go. Okay, engaged with the city to take a look at water access opportunities, and we worked closely with staff initially so we could define the area that we were looking at, and then start with, once we had figured out what locations we might actually have access to, then start putting together some sort of a ranking system in order to have something, you know, rise to the top as the most preferred location. The, I'm gonna show you a map in a minute. It's gonna start with the whole of the City of Bonita Springs. The areas that we were directed to look at were generally not on the Imperial River. I think the city's done an excellent job in creating water access for the residents of Bonita Springs with facilities like Bonita Springs River Park, Depot Park, Riverside Park, et cetera, et cetera, particularly all the way up the river, up the Imperial River to I-75. The areas that we were asked to look at were, how can we get more access to the southern stretch of Estero Bay off of Bonita Beach area, and what about Spring Creek? So we started with taking a look at the Lee County Property Preachers map, and what we ended up doing was taking a look at all these locations. Here's the Imperial River, and this is the area that we were said, you know, we've got pretty good access down here. Let's not bother with that at the time being. Let's take a look at what we can do up Bonita Beach, and then also, let's take a look at what we've got available in Spring Creek. Well, we started with taking a look at the Lee County Property Preachers map and looking at the platted lot lines and figuring out what locations were available. There are many road right-ofways available, where there's no, it's basically public-owned property that borders on the water. Unfortunately, with Spring Creek, nothing like that exists. We had one opportunity, which I'll get to shortly regarding access on Spring Creek. So as a result, we started focusing on Bonita Beach, and we actually started at the top end and took a look at all the facilities that are available on Lover's Key. And essentially, as you're probably aware, you know, we've got a really good boat ramp here at Call Johnson, and we've got Dog Beach, which is a facility that the public uses to get you out to the Gulf of Mexico. And so we kind of narrowed down our location basically on Bonita Beach and looked closely at the existing beach accesses that are along the Gulf side. Those beach accesses could also be leveraged for access to waters on the bayside because of existing parking. In other words, we want to take advantage of what existing infrastructure existed so that it wasn't an expensive endeavor to improve or get public access. We also looked at what kind of public access that might be. And clearly, in those small pieces, a little, I'll call them pocket parks, for lack of a better term, you might have at best an observation deck, or more preferably, some sort of a launching location for paddlecraft, canoes, kayaks, paddleboards. Stand-up paddleboard business is booming business right now. And it's also very environmentally friendly, too. Motorized vessel launching on trailers, that's a little bit different task. So we were challenged in that regard in terms of finding locations that were suitable. This is the basic, the layout of Bonita Beach, and we took a look at all of these areas along the whole eastern side of Bonita Beach and correlated those to what beach accesses we had existing, which are these little red spots that you see in the report. Oh, I'm sorry, one wrong. For each site, and this is an example of the things that we looked at for each site. We started with the property address to make sure it wasn't privately owned property. We took a look at, you know, the general description of the site. We broke it down into what the characteristics of the site were. Was it totally vegetated? Was it paved access with a nice vertical seawall there? Was there an extensive mangrove fringe that we had to go through? What did the waters look like offshore? Did we drop right off into a deep navigable channel that's already been dredged and is likely to be maintained, or was it a very shallow seagrass meadow? So we took a look at all those characteristics to kind of get a sense of what each site provided to the city, and then we put this into this matrix that we developed, which basically assigned a value for certain elements for each location, hoping to have something that would rise to the top in terms of a preference. We looked at what was the distance to the nearest beach access from each location, knowing that, you know, if you're pulling up and you're dropping off a paddlecraft and you're gonna park in a beach access, is it a long walk? Is it a short walk? Is it just across the street? Those were some of the things that we took a look at. So we listed the beach access proximities. Was there actually watercraft access? And in other words, if there was already existing access, we gave that a high ranking, because that's something that's already existing that we can leverage up for additional public access. If there was none, we gave it a low ranking, because that means we're gonna have to try and put money into creating the infrastructure to get that access into the water. We also looked at the parcel size. Clearly, the larger the parcel that's in the public venue, the more resource we have to work with, and that includes potentially parking, maybe creating a boat ramp, dockage, those types of things. We talked about whether the neighborhood needs were met. In these neighborhoods, many of these neighborhoods, there are some land-bound properties that have within their own neighborhood a public access to the water that might service their needs. That would increase their ability to maybe, you know, hand-trailer their paddlecraft down and launch at one of the paddlecraft locations in that neighborhood. Having that water access is simply gonna improve the value of their property as well as the value of the lifestyle that they have there. We also talked about what kind of upland infrastructure we had, what kind of neighborhoods we had. If we had a piece of property that had two residences on both sides, that didn't rank as high as a piece of property that had commercial on both sides. So we took that into account. We also looked at what was the upland pave, what kind of vegetation we had, and the shoreline type. Was it natural? Was it improved? Was there a vertical seawall? Was it a nice sandy beach, those types of things? And that's how we came up with scoring these locations. And I'm gonna basically go through what I consider to be kind of the top three in terms of low investment, high yield return for improving public access. And the first one is on the Melody Lane Boat Ramp. There's an existing boat ramp in this location. This was what was in the paper yesterday, the photograph that you may have seen, and it's in the report. This is actually an improved concrete boat ramp that exists there, and it's adjacent to a commercial hotel, and it's also got beach access on this side. So this is a situation where we could actually, with very little investment, basically signage and posting on the city's website, Melody Lane Boat Ramp, and someone could come down. Now, keeping in mind that trailable boats could be launched here, the dilemma is, where do you put the trailable vessel? the dilemma is where do you put the trailable vessel? That's not likely a convenience. A paddlecraft that's mounted on top of somebody's vehicle, you could actually drive up, drop your paddlecraft, turn around and come and park in the beach parking area, and then go off paddling away. So those are the kind of opportunities that we were looking at. And this one was what we felt ranked pretty high because it's pretty much existing. Not much involved, other than put some signage up and let the public know that it's open to the public and that it's not a private ramp, which is kind of the feel that you get that this is might be a private ramp associated with this commercial establishment. The next location, we're actually two locations. This is sites E and F, and the street addresses are in the report. But this particular piece of property ranked very high because it was fairly large in size. I think it was over 1,000 square feet of area to work with. The city is already maintaining this to a limited extent in terms of keeping it mowed and improved. We obviously have a natural shoreline that we have to get through. We don't have any development on either side, even though it's zoned for residential. And my beach access number two is down here, which is in a fairly short walking distance to this location. And my access going out from this point, I can run right out. And in fact, I don't know if the graphic shows it, but it's not much to get through here. This is an island area to get through here with paddlecraft and not have any interference with residences in the neighborhood. In other words, not a lot of people moving back and forth in your own personal backyard canal system, which I'm sure is gonna be a concern of the people that live in this community. The second option was basically down here, and again, same situation. Smaller pieces of property represents an opportunity for a paddlecraft launching location. You've got a minimal amount of residences that you have to paddle past. Not an appropriate location for a boat ramp per se, while this one could potentially support a boat ramp. You'd have to create some parking on the site, and it's a little bit tight to do that. But both locations are in fairly close proximity to beach access number two. And that's what we're talking about, leveraging existing infrastructure. The next location, and again, this one is interesting in the fact that it's ranked high because it was very close to beach access locations. It's at the bottom of this canal system. There are residences on both sides. Neither one of the docking, this one doesn't look like it has docking facility. This one does. There's some riparian issues associated with this. And keep in mind, too, the Property Praiser's website isn't always the most accurate representation of what the actual boundaries of the property are in relation to the aerial photograph. And case in point, in some places like on North Captiva, we've got as much as 30 feet of skew between aerial photograph and the actual plat of properties. So that's something to always keep in mind. But this does represent an access location that's in a very short walking distance to available parking. And again, this could be something as simple as an observation platform, could be a sitting area. It could be a paddlecraft launching location, non-motorized vessels only. So it doesn't represent a noisy issue for people that live in the community. And it's within short walking distance to the parking areas along the Gulf side. Spring Creek, I mentioned before, we looked at Spring Creek. And there's very little availability of access on Spring Creek. It's basically been entirely privatized. Anything that is available, you'd have to go in and purchase private property and create a lot or create an access in that particular situation. We did talk with Joe Bullos, who is the owner of this particular piece of property called Benita Commons. And Spring Creek runs down through here and does represent an access location. However, there are some limitations on what can take place there. The first limitation is the willingness of the private property owner to enter into some sort of a joint use agreement with the city. That's the first thing. So you have to have a willing property owner interested in investing with the city on this access. The second item is that we have a conservation easement that's placed over the entire shoreline as part of the South Florida Water Management District Stormwater Permit for this development. It basically has specific prohibitions that basically say you can't put any kind of structures in here. Now, we have talked with the district. And they have some issues because the area's not being maintained exotic-free. And that's a concern they have. That's one of the requirements of the conservation easement. When we mentioned the ability to put in some paddlecraft access, they said, yes, we would willingly entertain a modification of this conservation easement to allow for non-motorized paddlecraft access through this conservation easement. So that's a positive. It also is a positive for Mr. Bullos because if we can enter into some sort of an agreement with the city where the city would take over maintenance of the conservation easement, that's one maintenance issue that he has with the district that basically comes off of his shoulders and becomes responsibility of the city. That's not a bad trade-out if you can get access. There obviously would have to be some serious infrastructure constructed here. If you go to the site and you walk along this retaining wall, it's the better part of an eight-foot vertical drop to get down to basically the soil line where the mangroves are. So we would have to build a fairly extensive ramped access to get down to the water and then a floating dock of some sort to be able to launch paddlecraft to get into Spring Creek. So if the city is interested in trying to get water access to Spring Creek, this represents, in my opinion, your best shot at doing that. But it's gonna require some negotiations with the property owner. And I think when we did meet with him, he was very amenable to conversation about it. He just didn't say flat out, no. I think there's some very symbiotic benefits for both parties if there was some sort of an agreement that could be entered into for the use of this property. The Dog Beach Fishing Platform, when we did a study back in 2004 looking for something on the order of access, initially started out with a Gulf of Mexico fishing pier similar to Town of Fort Myers Beach. We basically veered away from that opportunity. We looked at a number of different locations in the city of Benita Springs. And we basically arrived at this location as one of the best opportunities to create multiple uses on existing area that's already being used under, already under existing uses by the public. The, when the question came up of, while we're looking for paddlecraft access to Astero Bay, this was obviously a natural, but could be obviously a very simple paddlecraft access. But I felt that, and I talked with Nicole, that we would actually bring this into the report for some consideration by the city and give you an idea of what we had come up with before. In this particular case, oh, let me back up one second. When we first looked at this, we were considering putting some sort of pier underneath the bridge here and another one on this side. So we had access from both sides. And there were some logistical problems with the Florida Department of Transportation of building underneath the existing bridge. They were not too happy about that concept. It works great for, if you go into Matanzas Pass Bridge in Fort Myers Beach, they've got the fishing piers that are underneath the bridge. It's great because it kind of keeps you out of the elements and the shade, gives you great access. You've got a lot of fishing areas. So we came up with an alternative design, which basically created this parking area with a turnabout. And then we had a fishing pier, observation platform, whatever you want to call this, multiple use platform. We called it the Dog Beach Observation Platform for numerous activities. Fishing from here on the flood tide, up underneath the bridge is an option. Ebb tide, you've got this great mangrove fringe that you can fish along. There is, there is, we had made provisions for paddlecraft launching right at the base of the platform, the pier. So you would pull up, basically drop your paddlecraft. And then from this point, you can go into Astero Bay or out in the Gulf of Mexico, along Big Hicker Island. And then, of course, we created parking spaces. And this also included a restroom facility and included an improved access down to Dog Beach. I think the most important component about this, aside from the multiple uses for the public, was that we would also be placing this into some sort of a stormwater management system, which I think is important for this location because right now it's just random parking anywhere along here. And whether people like it or not, vehicles do leave, petroleum products, they drop them on the ground. Oil's greases, different, you know, factors that go into. We have runoff that comes from the bridge. It runs off down in here. So putting together some sort of a stormwater management plan and parking was what we had recommended out of the original report, and we just brought it up. It could be also just as simply as designating this as a canoe kayak launch location, and basically that's it. So it can be as simple as that, or it can be as sophisticated. It's up to the city what they're interested in pursuing. But we wanted to bring that to your attention. Again, our recommendations were the Melody Lane Boat Ramp. That was an existing surfaced ramp, close proximity to parking facilities. Wouldn't take much, some signage, put it in the loop for maintenance by Parks and Rec folk. Sites E and F, again, close to public parking at the beach accesses. We had relatively quick access to the southern Astero Bay and trepid waters. And there are already existing uses there, and city staff is already maintaining the parcel E. And then the King's Q, again, only because of its close proximity to the public beach access number one. And then again, for Spring Creek, Benita Commons, benefits to both parties involved. Conservation easement maintenance would be a governmental entity, would be something that the district would prefer to see and that there was district support for this particular project. The Dog Beach Fishing Platform, again, just in a quick assessment, it has access not only to Astero Bay but to the Gulf of Mexico. It's a high-use recreation area already with Dog Beach. Multiple uses for Dog Park, the paddlecraft fishing. Again, I mentioned the water quality improvements dealing with stormwater management. We have proposed restroom facilities, which is something that is beneficial because of the existing uses. And obviously, there's some partnering opportunities because it's Lee County-owned lands. No neighborhood conflicts. I don't have to worry about trying to fit in a paddlecraft launching location between two residences or in an area that has basically predominantly residential uses. We talked about permanent parking and the roundabout concept to get access and working off the base of the bridge. And our cost estimate for this, and this, we basically inflated this by about 15% based on our $2,004, is about 2.33 million. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very good. Good job. Counsel, any questions for Hans? Anything? Hans, I'll start it out here. I gotta tell you, the Melody, as you might know, I'm familiar with these. It's my job to be familiar with these. The Melody Boat Ramp has been there for such a long time. It is really well-used, mainly kind of by the neighborhood, people who want to launch a boat real quick and that kind of thing. So I think there's some possibilities for improvement there. But again, as you said, you know, I mean, I don't think it's ever gonna be anything that people are gonna use and be able to park a trailer or anything like that. So I think just for drop-off and stuff like that, it's already being used for that. And I think that it's something that the city at least needs to protect. And that's what I would say to everybody here. The scary part of your report here is that this is it. If we don't protect these, there aren't any more. Which at the age that the city is right now and what you see gonna be happening in the future, I mean, if this is all we're gonna have, this is it. So at the very least, we need to protect these things. I like E and F. I think there are, regardless of what we decide to do within the future, I think that they have potential of some sort. So I think that we just can't let them sit fallow. I think that there needs to be a master plan for it. I would agree with that. To what extent, that's gonna be up to counsel. The King's Q one, don't like that a bit. My own personal opinion is that people are gonna hate that. They're gonna hate a lot of these. But that one, they're really gonna hate that one. Especially those two people on the end of the canal. Yeah, not gonna like that very much. But I know what you're trying to get at there, and from an engineering standpoint, looks great.
Well, that was the ranking system. When you set up a ranking system and you set these criteria, you don't know what's gonna rise to the top. You kind of have a sense, but that's the nice part about the ranking system. It's a fairly objective way of looking at location. And because it was so close to the beach access number one, it bumped it right up to the top pretty quickly.
Absolutely, yeah. Not gonna happen.
No. We understand that there's some politics of the community in using these facilities, no doubt.
And the Spring Creek access, that is so frustrating. I mean, and we've worked together on this, and it is so frustrating that the Spring Creek is such a beautiful area, such a great place to paddle and kayak. The city is investing dollars in that for dredging and trimming mangroves and that. And there's no, no, the only access we have is this one shot. And it's just a shot at doing something there. I think we should pursue it. It's not, there's a potential for being a wonderful facility there, but it's all gonna be dependent on a partnership with the owner and the water management. But the one I'm really excited about still, sorry, is the Dog Beach one. I think that one, that's just awesome. And obviously, it's not anything that the city should shoulder on its own. I think that it's gonna take, you know, various partners, state, county, and us because we're solving everybody's problems there. I mean, you know, the Dog Beach there, it's kind of county property right now, right? So I mean, you know, all that parking, everything, we supply bathrooms, do parking, have an observation fishing platform and a place to launch kayaks. I think that's, what a wonderful facility. And the only question I have is why isn't it there right now? I mean, when you really look at it and you look at our community and that we're a water-related community, why don't, what? I mean, right there, when you stop there, everybody's just kind of tromping through the mud. That's us. We just kind of, we're content to tromp through the mud to get the thing. So that's my 50 cents for it. What all you think? Any other comments? Jenna?
Sure. I'll weigh in on that. I agree with, I have never been able to kayak Spring Creek. So I would love to see it. I've seen pictures. I've seen videos of it. But I've never been able to experience that because I don't have access. So I would love for us to explore that, too. And I agree with Mayor Nelson that Dog Beach, as gorgeous as it is and what an amenity it is to be able to say that it's located in Benita Springs, it's not being used to its full potential. And, you know, the parking, you're right. When you think about the runoff and, you know, we just need to step up and do what we need to do, and we need to make that as beautiful as our dog park is.
Steve, do you have?
There.
Anybody? Anything else?
I'd like to hear from Steve about Spring Creek because that's your area.
Well, Spring Creek is a valuable asset for us, and we have not utilized it. At the point we should have. It's probably the first thing we ought to be doing in terms of this kind of a study is get to the Spring Creek piece. And it will be difficult. But the second most important thing for us is figuring out how we're gonna park people. Whether we need to transport them, find a place in town to drop trailers and transport them back to the drop points. And those are issues we have not addressed that this gives us an opportunity to start on. So thank you, Stephen.
Yeah, and I think that that part of the negotiation with the property owner, there's all kinds of parking there. But we're gonna, the city, I mean, since we hold the land development rules, we have the ability to do a lot of great negotiating there with that property owner. I mean, we just do. So we can kind of ride our own ticket there, but it's gonna take the, we just have to start engaging that owner there.
If I could make a suggestion, even if you don't have the resources to create the infrastructure for the access, I think now is the time to work with that property owner. Because he was willing to come to the table and talk to us personally to see if you can make some sort of long-term arrangement, some sort of entitlement for access, work that out with the district on the conservation easement so that you lock that in and it runs with the land so that it may be five years from now that you actually have the resources to put into improving it for the access. But at least you've done the legwork up front and have locked in those rights for that access. And I think that's really the key to using that property.
Yeah, I agree. I think getting the paperwork done and getting the agreement inked is really important. Because, and at the end of the day, there has to be something in it for the property owner. Just, or why is he gonna do it? I mean, so that's where, and if it takes, you know, removing the exotics along there, we hadn't had to worry about it. I really, I think that's money kind of not well, I mean, you know, we don't have to spend it. We just have to do these things. So, and creating that access is just invaluable. But anyway, any other comments?
I guess I would just say, right, absolutely, all for improved water quality, water access, but all in favor of taking care and addressing the concerns of our existing residents. How does this impact people that are, you know, currently living by the water? And how's that gonna affect their access to the water or their peace and entertainment or their quality of life? You know, this isn't meant to be not a NIMBY thing, but what about, you know, if we're gonna increase access to the water for people potentially outside of Benita Springs, I think we need to do that in harmony with the people that live in Benita Springs, and this will affect. So the combination of all these things, I know is what we're looking at, but we need to have further discussions. There are concerns from people down at the beach. I haven't heard from anybody from Spring Creek or some of these other areas. But as long as we continue to keep all of this in mind while achieving our goal without, you know, adversely affecting people, I say we continue the conversation.
And that circles around to the mayor's comment about the Melody Lane access, that it's been used for years. But when you, as the public, go to look for boat ramp locations in the city of Benita Springs, it's not listed anywhere. So it's clearly a local So it's clearly a local community access, and there's need for that. And so there may be a choice that the city takes on improving these access locations, but limiting those accesses to local residents. I mean, that's kind of a question mark that comes up. Or you may simply say, hey, we choose not to make that available. If you know about it, great, you can use it, but if it seems like it's a boat ramp associated with a commercial development right there and people shy away from it, maybe those local residents like that exclusivity. So that's a philosophical conundrum that the town, that the city council's gonna have to deal with.
Right, absolutely. Could you list some other examples of studies and interactions you've had in the past where you help alleviate these problems and help talk through these type issues?
Well, we're always negotiating. I mean, the classic examples are riparian rights issues, and where we're doing docking facilities, and we've got neighbors on both sides, and you're trying to come to determination as to, well, where's your riparian rights line? Is it over on my side, is it on their side? How do I get that determined? So that's not unusual to have those kinds of conversations. Again, there's always those, those, how do you, you know, you got, as you pointed out, the NIMBY mindset of, you know, I don't want anybody in my neighborhood. That's very common. I mean, it's not unusual. But then you've also got these stresses, and we're right, for example, we're right in the middle of one of those in the city of Pontegora. We're looking at creating an additional boating access location, a new channel. But that's utilizing an existing marked channel to minimize permitting issues, yet I've got a boating public that says, I don't want that traffic in my channel. It's gonna ruin my, it's gonna change my way of life, yet you have all these stressors on use demand. We want public access. And so, yeah, I mean, I'm familiar with working with those, and it's really, it's a process you go through, and a lot of times it comes down to what the political will of the governing body is.
Right, right, right. Absolutely. So have you heard from, have you heard concerns yourself, or?
On these locations?
Right.
No, we haven't dug into, I mean, I'm sure that the concept of having a public access in the report, which was noticed yesterday in the news press, I would have, I was surprised no one stood up and said, I don't want that King's Q in my backyard. So, but at this point, no, we've not had any feedback from any residents about what the report stipulates or says in terms of preferred locations.
Yeah, obviously, the, there's some self-limiting factors on some of these. I mean, the Melody and the ENF ones, I mean, the King's Q, let's just not even talk about that one, okay? I don't think that's, I'm sorry. I don't think that's, that's, I think that will kind of spoil the entire bunch by itself, just being there. So I would suggest, at the very least, taking that off the list. But the Melody one and the ENF, I think they're self-limiting, anyway. I mean, it's not like you're gonna have parking there or anything. It's got, I think it's just neighborhood, and it's the way it is. And so far as somebody being able to launch something and then park on the other side, well, good luck with that. There's never a parking place available over there, so, but I think it's just gonna end up being a good amenity for the quality of the people, the life of the people who live within that general area. I mean, a lot of people in the downtown area, when they go to launch, they're gonna launch where they're going to. But I think that this is, this is all about quality of life for everyone, and I don't think it's gonna be an intrusive thing. We're not building giant boat ramps. The ones that I think, the two that I think that have potential, if not, like you said, the Dog Beach one, I think is very important, and I know that this is, we brought this up before, and people had a lot to hate about it because of traffic or whatever, but it's being used like a lot right now, and by a lot of people. I think that this is, this is more of an improvement thing for the entire community there. I don't, I really think that this is something that, like you said, there's, it's limited so far as you can do a lot of great stuff with this, and you don't have to worry about the neighborhood concepts. I mean, you really don't. And the same thing with the one in, with, in Spring Creek, other than, you know, it will add a few kayaks and canoes to the water rate? Yep. But, you know, they're gonna be paddled around anyway, I think, so. I think the next step would be to go ahead and, for counsel to decide if, which one of these that we feel comfortable at least pursuing in concept and narrowing down? Is that what counsel would like to do?
Yeah, I think that's the next step, and we need to keep it moving, because this is critical to the whole public. And certainly, Spring Creek and Dog Park are on top of my list.
Yeah.
In that order.
Ben, in that order.
Yes, Bill?
I don't like to rush things, and I haven't heard or enough information from the people that will be involved that live on the beach. And we have a responsibility to the people on the beach who live there and have lived there for a long time, that we thoroughly investigate every location, and, but I think we need to have the input from the public as opposed to jumping into certain things immediately. I don't think that's in the best interest of the city.
Okay. Would you, I mean, let's characterize it like this. I think that, and I agree that there's the Melody and ENF one, that's gonna, that's just not gonna be popular by any respect, even though the Melody one already exists. But I do think that the Spring Creek one and the Dog Park one are ones that we probably should, we should pursue, because, you know, the Spring Creek one may prove to be untenable anyway. At least if we dredge down, we say, yeah, this is doable, and then we can find out what the consequences are then. But the Dog Park one seems to be like a no, Dog Park one, I don't know what we're calling it that, but anyway, Dog Beach.
Yeah.
Sorry. The Dog Beach one seems to be one that's, that's, in an area that's, that's gonna be very popular, anyway. That state park is gonna become more popular all the time, and it's one I think that we can get funded. Would you all be willing to go forward just in the investigation stages for Spring, the Spring Creek and Dog Park one? And these other ones, we just take a policy of not allowing anything to happen to those accesses? In other words, just be sure that they don't, they don't get used for something else? And so that, so that in the future, we can still look at them? Would that be okay?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
I just had one question. You said you didn't look at Big Hickory Island? I was just wondering why.
No, we did. We looked at Big Hickory, but that's the locations that were the best. Everything else is, there's close proximity to accesses that are basically owned by the county and maintained by the state, called Johnson Park and those areas.
So there isn't any capabilities of doing things on Big Hickory?
On Big Hickory, the, well, we looked at the, again, I mentioned the dock access on the south side. I mean, you could probably take a look at that, but we were trying to maximize infrastructure investment, and there's not, I mean, there's already people that are using the south side of the bridge at New Pass, getting into the water at those locations, but there wasn't really much offering there that would have benefited more so than doing the improvements in the Dog Beach location. Are you following me, what I'm saying there, in terms of the infrastructure?
Okay. And did you look at, like, increased beach access, too, or you were just looking at the?
We were looking at boating, basically water access. And we didn't pursue any other beach access locations. And also, one other thing I wanted to comment on, there's a safety aspect of the Dog Beach location. Right now, there's no real regulated access to those parking areas, and the site distance coming off the bridge is somewhat of a problem to an extent, of somebody coming down the bridge and somebody pulling in front of them. If you noticed on our plan, we actually had the access quite a ways down from the bridge, so that there was an improved site distance. And that was part of the discussions we had with FDOT, or actually, I think it was Lee County DOT at this location, on, you know, that traffic issue, traffic pattern, and would it be acceptable in terms of turning lanes and things of that nature? So there's actually been some design put into the, into the facility. But that safety aspect was one of the points that came out of our discussions with County DOT on that.
Okay. All right. Into the discussion, we got a motion, a second?
There's no public comment on this, right, at this point? Or is there?
Well, this is, this is probably something that comes out of the heading of hardly binding. I mean, other than, when we say that we're gonna look into something, it's like, and in the next meeting, you say, let's not look at it anymore? Okay. That's probably how hard it is.
And Mr. Mayor, if I might, you know, staff is getting direction from counsel based on how you vote on this particular thing. And it's going to take quite a while for us to be able to pursue these items, just these two items. So please don't worry about being hurried about this. We're not gonna be back at the next meeting with a plan and a budget. I mean, that's just not gonna happen.
And construction is not starting next week, is it?
Construction's not happening next week. So there is time, there will be multiple times in front of counsel before we, we get to where we need to be on either of these two projects, because we obviously have design issues, we've got partnership issues and discussions to be had. Yes, we need to hear from the public, and then also, we need to pursue funding opportunities, which may take multiple years in and of themselves, depending on where we go for that funding.
All right. Yes.
It's, for the Spring Creek thing, it's more than just getting people on the river easier. Spring Creek has always been sort of a stepsister in our waterways, and it, we have to fight every time we try to get it dredged, we try to get the exotics out, and if we get more people on Spring Creek to use it in a careful, safe manner, then we won't have those problems in the future. So that's why I'd like to have it as the number-one piece, as much as anything.
Well, and I have to just go to bat here for this whole concept of talking about this. I know a lot of people wish this would go away, and no one ever goes on the waterway because it's gonna, they're gonna be paddling behind my house, et cetera, et cetera, and blocking the roads and whatever. But you know what? If we were doing this town all over again, and there wasn't anybody here at all, and we were gonna have a comprehensive plan that said, you know what, here's the way we're gonna do this. We're gonna allow you to build on the waterways, but we're not gonna allow you to sever the public's access. You would put that in there. You would put that in there from the beginning. Yeah, I know you would, because you'd have to. You wouldn't be like, hey, we're gonna let every square inch of this, I mean, you know what, here I am, the marine contractor, I should be rooting for everybody to buy everything up so I can build all kinds of things. But it's not right. It's just not right to sever everybody's access. This isn't asking a whole lot, these two things. So, anyway, hopefully, we'll go forward with it. And you know what? Public comment? There's gonna be a lot of that, I'm sure, along the way. So, again, we have a motion, a second, in other words, to, and the motion is, as I understand it, to go ahead and, these other ones that you've mentioned there, we're going to just protect those for right now, and not do anything insofar as studying on them, but we're going to go ahead and look further in, slowly, look further into these other two, the Dog Beach one and the Spring Creek access. Is that your understanding?
Just, I'd like to further clarify that Spring Creek is ranked number one and Dog Beach number two.
Okay.
Okay.
Good. And roll call.
Councilman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longart.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Hans, good job.
Nice job.
Good job. Okay, and here we are to the consent agenda. Everybody take a look? It's quite sizable. A through J, take a look at that, and if there's anything that you would like to see polled at this time for discussion purposes, let us know. If not?
Would you, D for discussion, please.
D for discussion. Anything else? I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the remainder.
There's a motion, a second to approve the remainder. D being held out. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longart.
Aye.
Councilman Mackintosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, Bill, item D.
As soon as I find it.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Couple of questions. In the application. Number 10, does the applicant own the property where the event is to be held? Question mark. If not, please attach a letter of permission from the property owner. Is that in? I didn't see that.
It is. On the last page, J and K Benita Group LLC granted permission for them to host the event on the property. In the very back of your packet.
Okay. Is that, is that the, is that the person owns the brew house?
I own the brew house. He owns the building that we lease.
Okay, all right. Next question, you're anticipating a crowd of 500 people. Where are you gonna park the cars?
Dolly's has given us access to her parking lot for the cars, and the 500, we're expecting throughout the day. In coming up with my number of 500, I looked at our sales over the last year, and I compared it against our busiest Saturday ever. And during that day, we had about 280 to 300 transactions. So then I figure if at least half or two-thirds of that was multiple people, that's where I came up with the number of 500. So it should be throughout the whole day of our regular business hours.
Okay. Are you going to be using the vacant lot?
We will not be using the vacant lot.
You know which one I'm talking about? Okay. It seems to me that with that amount of people, you're not having any police or any sheriff's department people working?
The sheriff's office deputies, every event that goes through, goes through the sheriff's office to be reviewed, and they let us know whether or not they need to have detailed deputies on-site during the event. And we did do this for this process, and at this time, they are not recommending, because of the duration of the event time, deputy to have a detail scheduled for that day.
Okay. And the last question is, any time there's an event that goes for eight hours, there's always the possibility of circumstances coming about. Not always, it's the time there isn't, and that's the reason for my question. When you have 500 people, 200 cars, whatever, and also serving beer for eight hours, even though it's a, it's a very good brew, it's about safety for the people, and of course, the access from where you're located, the few parking places that are there are not adequate, and of course, I'm anticipating some traffic circumstances. But these are my own personal views, has nothing to do with anybody else on council, just for the precautions to make sure it's a, I know it'll be a positive event, most of the time they are, but there's always that likelihood when you have so many people. Thank you.
Very much. Counsel?
I just wanted to bring up, looking at the application, it looked like the address was incorrect for the event. It looked like it listed a residential address.
The residential address is our corporate headquarters address. So when it pulled up the LLC, it pulled up that, that address. The event is the 9786 Benita Beach Road.
Okay. And I just want to say congratulations on being there a year and now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're very, very happy to be part of the community.
Okay. Counsel? Yeah, motion by Bill. Is there a second? And a second? Any other discussion? I gotta tell you, this place is an awesome place. When you're inside the momentum there, it's hard to even believe you're in Benita Springs. It's pretty cool. I gotta tell you, they've got a good thing going on.[1598.16]
The residential address is our corporate headquarters address. So when it pulled up the LLC, it pulled up that, that address. The event is the 9786 Benita Beach Road.
Okay. And I just want to say congratulations on being there a year and now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're very, very happy to be part of the community.
Okay, okay, counsel.
Then I'll move that.
Motion by Bill, is there a second? And a second? Any other discussion? I gotta tell you, this place is an awesome place. When you're inside the momentum there, it's hard to even believe you're in Beneath Springs. It's pretty cool. I gotta tell you, they've got a good thing going on. Boy, would I love to see you downtown.
Pretty desolate.
Ew, okay, good. Let me put that on part of this right here. No, I'm just kidding. Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Okay, we are to public comment. Any member of the public wishing to speak this time on any city item, please come forward.
Morning, everyone. My name's Matthew Repstor from with the Pavees Law Firm. Just want to introduce myself real quick. I'm here this morning on behalf of our friends at Wawa and Brightworks, who is the developer for Wawa, going to be just making some comments when the time comes on our, I think it's the first one, our ordinances for second reading and public hearing this morning. Just want to go ahead and introduce myself so I don't take up time doing that during the other public comment, but it's good to see you all this morning.
Good, thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward on any city item?
Morning, Mayor. Peter O'Flin, for the record. I would just appreciate at the appropriate time, an update from city management on when the landscaping is gonna be completed on US 41. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Here, here.
Fred Forbes. Wanted to say that there was a seminar that was hosted by the mayor of Fort Myers last Friday, that I had the opportunity to at least hear the beginning half where they really had the world-class experts. What we heard was way of the future for cities is neighborhoods that are gonna be almost contained, where you have food, restaurants, and all that. You'll have a commercial below, offices above, and residences above that. And that was the theme of that, what I got out of that. They also said you're gonna get much more ad valorem, which I know the city loves that, per acre when you do that, because you're stacking all those uses vertically. They also said that the days of widening streets were not, are more or less passed by, because these will be much more walkable, bikeable, and all that. Last thing I want to say, you'll hear more about this, but our comp plan, through it, is a common theme. You don't approve new developments which hurt the existing surrounding areas. It's gotta be compatible. I think the city should be looking more towards, if they have to do it, if somebody wants to come in, let's say an industry, use the power of eminent domain to put together a proper parcel if there's not one available. It would not, it'd be located where you're not incompatible with the surroundings. You will hear more about that. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Rick Steinmeier again. Dog Beach is a fabulous place to put this extra parking and this pier going out. I believe that there's a 200-foot road right-of-way, which is shown on these demonstrations, that I suppose the road right-of-way would be owned by Lee County. I'm not certain who owns the other. There are many owners of property out on Lover's Key and Black Island and stuff, but this would, this shows it all in the road right-of-way, so that won't be very expensive. Wouldn't have to buy anything for somebody. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. For the record, Kathy McGrath. And here I am, it's Wednesday, and Saturday is Riverfest, our autumn celebration. And before I talk about it all, I do have to thank and give recognition to former Councilman Martha Simons. She's the one that came up with this years ago. This will be the ninth one, and this is gonna be the fourth one the city is sponsoring. And it starts at 2:00. You know, we have our Imperial River Challenge, the race is down the river, and the benefits will, the proceeds will benefit the Benita Springs Waterways Conservation Fund. And of course, we have our Rubber Ducky Race. I found this little orphan at Community Hall when we were cleaning it out, and Dallas knows about it, and he will get it. It's got the number, and I'm not gonna tell you what it is. And tickets are $5. You can get five tickets for 20. You can buy them here at City Hall, and they will be on sale there, too. I think they're gonna go in the river around 4:00 o'clock. And the proceeds from that, now, this is being sponsored by Fine Mark Bank, nice prizes, and the proceeds will benefit the Benita Wonder Gardens. Our festivities, there's all kinds of fun things for the kids. I mean, there are pumpkin patch, pony rides, hay rides, petting zinnomora. And I remember, folks, this event is another one of our wonderful free events, okay? There will be a beverage wagon, that will benefit Rotary, of course. And then we have our fish fry from 5:00 to 8:00, including a cornhole tournament, you don't want to miss that. And the fish fry, we have a selection, either tilapia or mullet. Tickets in advance are $10. At the gate there, they'll be 15. So get your tickets in advance. Now, it has, this has everything with it, you know, beans, slaw, hush puppies, roll tea, you name it. And as I said, get your tickets in advance, they're on sale here. I guess that's about it. There will be, there will be live music. And don't let the fact that there is a little bit of work going on downtown, you'll find a way to get there. And remember, folks, you know, while this is going on, please patronize our wonderful people that have businesses there, because, you know, they're really putting up with a lot of problems. So don't be deterred. You know, if you want to go somewhere, if you can be determined, you can find a way to get there. So we will look forward to seeing you on Saturday. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Seeing none, let's go ahead and get on with a second reading and public hearing. Audrey.
Thank you. For the record, Audrey Vance, city attorney. I'll read the first title block into the record. This is an amendment to the city, Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4, Zoning, amending Sections 4-868, 4-869, and 4-872 to allow administrative relief for innovative projects, modifying subuses in the old US 41 redevelopment urban corridor and in the highway commercial areas 3B, revising the development standards for the residential subareas, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codifications, Scrivener's Ears, inclusion code, and effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. The first reading of the ordinance was held on October 7, 2015, where council did make some changes which were made to the ordinance. Jay Sweet can give you an update as to the ordinance.
Jay.
Good morning. For the record, Jay Sweet, Community Development. I think the biggest change that happened since the last meeting, as you all recall, is that Royal Scoop came in, and they were concerned about being able to have their use in the downtown. And we met with them, spent about two or three hours with them, understanding their operation. Realized that we classified it a little bit differently, so the industrial areas they want to go into, they can still go into. But we've also added in here that along with restaurants, we have associated kindred food products, and we would allow them as an answerable use to the restaurant. In our discussions with them, we explained that at least 25% of their building would have to be the restaurant, ice cream shop, the 75% of it could be the production and manufacturing of ice cream as part of that. And so, that's where we are. Can answer any questions, we can go through the ordinance, your pleasure.
Okay. Counsel, you have any questions on the ordinance? Questions or comments?
Move to approve.
Oh, hold on a second, we're gonna have public comment. That's okay, thank you.
Public comment, I forgot.
Audrey, you have anything before we go to public comment?
No, also, we made the changes that Councilman Gibson asked for on Page 2, where we had including but not limited to. We took out the but not limited to.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak on this item and this item alone, please come forward.
Morning, again. I'll be brief, seeing as where things may be, may be headed. As you know, Wawa, again, Matthew Repstor for the record, on behalf of Wawa here. Wawa has purchased a parcel on the corner of Old 41 and Benita Beach, detailing this area. I'm not gonna go into great detail on, excuse me, on that area or what Wawa is. I know this has come up before. I know you all have done your homework, and some of you that may hail from the Northeast are actually very familiar with Wawa itself and its matriculation down here into the Southeast United States. You know, Wawa wants, and Brightworks, their developer, they want what Benita wants. They want to be part of a new, vibrant, revitalized community. They want to be part of something unique, be part of something genuine. They also want a lot of, in favor of what this ordinance has, and its flexibility to amend those things and have the flexibility for design, which is really crucial, I think, in what you're looking at and what you're, what you're planning for in your downtown area. To have that flexibility to make those decisions administratively, as Mayor Nelson said earlier, you guys hold the keys to the land development code. You guys hold the keys and the rules to that. So what they're looking for is exactly what Benita wants, to be part of that new, unique design. Wawa is not a company that spreads out in mass volume where they just arbitrarily plop down on every street corner that they can. This is, not to disparage any of these companies, but this is not a 7-Eleven, this is not a Circle K, this is not a mobile. This, that's not what Wawa is. They specifically target certain areas for where they believe growth is taking place, like right here in Southwest Florida, where they have a chance to do great business with a great community. That's why you've seen the target areas of Cape Coral, the new location that just opened, Fort Myers, the new location, and now here, coming, hopefully, coming to Benita Springs. When you're talking about your gateway to the downtown, I know it was, it was hard to miss, media outlets were there, and the, not really fascination, but the excitement for Wawa coming to our communities is undeniable. When it opened up, and the simultaneous grand openings in Cape Coral and Fort Myers, the media was there, hundreds of people came. These were very large events that drew people to the business. And so to have that kind of magnet out in front of your gateway to your downtown, to draw those people in with the excitement of Wawa, something new, something unique, not just a gas station you walk into like a Circle K, but you walk in and you've got your restaurant area right in front of you, your uniqueness, you go up on a touchpad, you order from a touchpad, which I just did it myself for the first time this past weekend, order your food actually on the touchpad from the kiosk, and these new revolutionary ideas that factor into that uniqueness that you're looking for, and that genuine aspect that you're looking for in your new downtown redeveloped area. To go along with that, I know certain requirements are going to be had, especially based with this ordinance on design, landscaping, and companies that come in are gonna have to meet those. But what's unique here is especially the fact that Wawa is coming to you basically hat in hand, and I don't know how many companies are doing this, maybe they're lining up to do it, but I know you've got one here specifically coming to you hat in hand saying, aside from the requirements that you want with setback, height, design, whatever, we're gonna give you the ultimate authority. We're gonna give you carte blanche to say, not only these basic requirements, but you get to approve the final design, you get to approve the final architecture, you get to approve the final pedestrian access, the landscaping. If you don't like it, we'll change it. You're basically, like you said, getting a blank check or carte blanche to decide what you want at the front of your community. And like I said, I don't know how many companies are coming, lining up to just basically hand that over to you and say, here, you make the final approval, we're at your disposal. With all that in mind, I mean, I know there's concerns with whatever business is going to come, however this redevelopment is going to play out, all the potential concerns you may have. But when you look at what Wawa wants to do, how it lines up with this community, how the city of Benita and this redeveloped downtown area, it's all in line. You all want the same things. So while there are concerns for either Wawa or any company, those concerns aside, there's so many good reasons to say yes to Wawa. This ordinance is great, the flexibility it provides, the services it's going to provide. They want to be in a partnership with Southwest Florida, matriculating down. They're already part of Cape Coral, Fort Myers, those have been fantastic so far. They want to be in a partnership with Benita Springs. We're hoping that happens. And I thank you.
Good deal. Hold on. Thank you. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Yes, Rick Steinmeier. Wawa wants to work with us. If they got rid of the gas pumps, they'd probably be all right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Yeah, this isn't what I had in mind about compatibility, but you've got this, this city, even that development on Old 41 redevelopment, is at a pivotal point. Don't just accept people with offers that we want to come in there and we're gonna do whatever you want. Think about the end result, and I think you can do far better with gateways to that major redevelopment. You've already got a bunch of intersections already screwed up in this town. So don't screw this one up. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Morning, counsel. My name's Steve Brachi. I'm here on behalf of Core Development, and Core Development is presently in for a modification to a, for a rezone on about 26 acres at the southwest corner quadrant, actually, of I-75 and Benita Beach Road. It's the former site approved several years ago for a Walmart site, and the application would downzone that to put apartments in the back, along with keeping the out parcels in the front closer. This is where the Speedway is, and it's east of where the Home Depot is, just for a frame of reference. There's a signalized intersection there.
Waffle House.
What's that?
Waffle House.
Waffle House is there, it's part of that, yeah.
Everybody knows where Waffle House is. Okay, go ahead.
The objective would be to kind of, you know, we've had some discussions with staff recently, because Quail's Nest Road comes in through there, right there at the intersection, it's a little bit of a dysfunction. So we were talking to staff about potentially how we can improve that access point, clean up that whole area, make it look better. You have, when the Home Depot site was approved way back when, there was a contemplation of connectivity. So you would have this, 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 this project would connect over all the way to Home Depot, which would provide tremendous access, because you have two, then two signalized intersections. You have a lot of synergies between the communities of people that go to Home Depot as well as this site. Point being, we wanted to just make the council aware of potential alternatives for sites such as Wawa, and that you can partner with the city of Benita Springs and Wawa at sites that may allow you to remain more consistent with your vision, both with respect to the Benita Beach Road corridor, as well as your entry point into Old 41 and downtown Benita Springs. And of course, this is at the crossroads of those two roads, and so you have that issue. And I just want to make sure that with respect to the discussions here, I think there should maybe potentially be some clarification, because I thought I heard the other gentleman say that they have, they're the purchaser of the property, the owner of the property. I'm not sure if they're the owner, if they're the contract purchaser of it. And also, I'm not sure with respect to them representing Brightwater, the developer for Wawa with, or Wawa directly. Because my client has been in some discussions with another developer of Wawa who's done several themselves. So I'm not sure what the real situation is there, whether, how far they are with Wawa, whether they were just the first, first one into the game, and, or whether there's something more there. But I think that that should be clarified as well with respect to who this particular person is representing, what their, what their knowledge is. Are they representing Wawa or just a developer for Wawa? Because there may be an extra layer in there that should really be part of this discussion. That's all we wanted today, was just to make sure that the council has kind of a bigger picture of everything before you, as you make your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve. Is there a second?
Do you want to hear if Mr., if you wish to give a clarification, or?
Yeah, I think so.
I will say that during this time, since he made that statement...
I don't know how that is pertinent to this ordinance.
Okay.
But it may be interesting, but do, I mean...
I wouldn't mind hearing, but one man's opinion, a person's opinion.
Counsel, would you?
Just call the vote.
Call for a vote.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second. Would you, come on up here, come on. But I kind of think this is between you two, but you can take it outside?
I won't, I won't go into, in great detail. If the gentleman wants to discuss it more, that's fine. I don't want to take up the council's time if you're ready for a vote. I didn't mean to make the, like a shadow game or a shell game here, or make it confusing in any way. Brightworks is doing the development for Wawa, and so they're, they're one of the same, not entities, but their interests are tied, one of the same, for the, for the zoning of this, of this parcel. So it's, it's not like we're putting up a front or playing a shadow game in any way. They're, the interests of the two are tied together.
Okay.
Do they own the property, or are they...
Owns the property, yeah.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I gotta know.
That's all right, go ahead.
I can't tell you with 100% certainty. I believe they have it, I believe they have it under contract, but I can't tell you with 100% certainty, but I can find out for you in 10 minutes if you want me to.
Nope.
No.
Bye.
I'm assuming you were looking at me, so, go ahead. Somebody else may want to. I'm sure Carl would like to know later. But anyway, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, roll call.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin. Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Okay, what else you got for us? Audrey?
Thank you. We're here for the next ordinance, which is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 4, Zoning, amending 4-1315 related to affordable housing bonus density provisions in the zoning chapter, requiring green construction for residential units eligible for affordable housing benefits, other minor changes, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codifications, Scrivener's Ears, inclusion code, and effective date. This is the second reading of the ordinance. I have reviewed the affidavit of publication on file at the clerk's office, and it is legally sufficient. John Dolmer will be providing the summary of the case.
Making a, a quick statement prior to Mrs. Hagan coming up here. The reason why I'm here is there was an alternative proposed by Mr. Forbes at the last hearing that dealt with more of a ratio, dealing with a certain percentage of houses being built to green standards, allowing for increased density proportionate with, with those units. I'm just here to let the council know that if this is a policy alternative that you're interested in, we'd be more than happy to discuss this and pursue it. However, the item that is being presented, and you will hear about in a second, is directly related to the application we have for the certified local government of the Florida Green Building Council. So the two, while they may be very similar, are very different in terms of their result. One will provide us points for application, while the other one would not. So with that statement, I'll hand it over to Mrs. Hagan.
Okay, thank you. Hello, Ms. Hagan.
Good morning. For the record, Jennifer DeFalla-Hagan. Again, the item that is before you today relates to the Florida Green Building Coalition designation standard. We can receive an additional credit if in the future the city ever decides to pursue affordable housing through the affordable density bonus. This would be your ticket for an extra credit.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Counsel, you have any questions for Jennifer?
No, just one comment.
Go ahead.
The path we're on to win this award, to become certified, is the end result. Finding ways to get points is not. I just want to make sure the council knows we're not out trying to find ways to get points.
Exactly.
This is just part of the longer-term plan for what we need. So, thank you. And the second point, Habitat again is supporting this because they already build the standards we expect. They're simply asking that we not increase them to the point where it makes them more difficult and impossible to provide housing for Habitat participants. Thank you.
Okay, is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Okay, see, you have a public comment on this? Yeah, okay, we have a motion and a second. And we'll go to public comment in the public hearing. Any member of the public wishing to speak at this time on this particular item, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slakta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Audrey, keep going.
And I'll take this one. Alex Boswell-Ebersole for the record, Assistant City Attorney. This is, this ordinance is an amendment to the Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 6, signs, amending Section 6-112.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Okay, next is a little more exciting. This is a permission to advertise another one of our ordinances for the green certification, although I agree with Councilman McIntosh, points is not the end result. There are several changes by this ordinance. It's summarized in the document, and Jennifer Hagan can give you further details.
Okay. Hi, Jennifer.
Hello again. For the record, Jennifer DeFaullo-Hagan. Again, we've had much discussion already previously, this meeting on water conservation. It's been a while since we've looked at our water conservation ordinance. Actually, it's been since 2006, so just shy almost of 10 years. So as we went through, as staff went through the Florida Green Building application that we are pursuing, we noticed opportunities that we could update in terms of best management practices citywide for water conservation efforts. Four things came up. One is to encourage folks to reuse wastewater or water on their sites, stormwater, in terms of cisterns, rain barrels, the like. Also, it would allow the city to look at adopting the plumbing code of the Florida Building Code that relates to gray water. So it gives our plan reviewers something to review submitted plans in terms to gray water. For new car washes, it requires that they follow the best management practices required by state. This is already required by the state, so again, it's just updating our ordinance to reflect that. And the fourth component of it is enacting new standards for water fountains and features that would allow for that water to be recirculated. It's almost an existing thing that folks do anyway, and then to possibly provide a secondary use as noise reduction, or another way to maximize stormwater reuse on site, and following some of the parameters of the voluntary Florida, Florida Water Star program. So those are basically the updates this water conservation ordinance is proposing.
Okay. Questions, counsel? This is something, I mean, I think is really exciting because, especially encouraging alternative water reuse technologies and the, the, the gray water portion of this recycling systems. Is this something you're going to have to, Benita Springs Utilities may be interested in this at some point in time?
They have reviewed what we're proposing and had no problem with it.
Great. Good to know. All right. Counsel, what would you like to do? Would you like to send it, be advertised, or advertise?
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
Pete, and a second. Janet, any other discussion? Roll call. Thank you.
Councilman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackton?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
All right, Carl, what do you got?
Yeah, and I just wanted to respond to a question posed earlier about the possible timing for landscaping completion on Forty-One. The landscapers had some challenges, but we anticipate that project, as you know, it's moving. They're putting in the ground, the ground cover now. We anticipate that within the next 60 days, probably sooner than that, but 60 days, just so everyone knows.
Okay. There was a, I think the reason people are asking, there was a visible lull there for a while, and that our, our staff was working hard to...
They're back on it now, for sure. Yes.
Rectify, so we have people on the ground again, so, anyway. Anything else? You're all good?
That's it, sir.
Okay, and we are too. The mayor and councilmember I just reported. Let's start down here with Bill. Bill, what do you got?
Thank you, Ben. On Saturday, October 24th, the Lions Club is having their second annual golf tournament at Worthington Country Club. Last year, it was really a great turnout. We're hoping for a larger turnout this, this year. And also, we will be serving lunch instead of going back to the Lions Club this year, so the lunch will be served at Worthington Country Club. So if you'd like to golf on Saturday, the weather looks fantastic. The wind's coming out of the northeast. It should be pleasant. Please come out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mike, what you got?
Yeah, I'm just a little disappointed in the downtown reconstruction. They increased the detour, the full three blocks, but they have not been doing anything since they increased the detour. So to me, it just seems like they're blocking access to more businesses unneedily right now. And in addition to that, the signage that was supposed to be there to tell you how to get to the businesses won't be here till tomorrow. So I, I don't understand why they increased the detour when they should have just left it the same, being as they're not doing any work, and they don't have the new signage.
Huh. That sounds like a question. Would anybody like to answer that? Nobody's running up here. Go ahead.
The issue with the signage is going to be corrected. The new sign should be out there tomorrow, and I think that the holdup on the construction obviously had to do with what was found underground. We're actively pursuing a resolution to those issues. It's being monitored. It's being investigated right now. We hope to see some active construction shortly. These things happen. I mean, it does...
But if, but if it's not gonna, you know, if we don't have the active construction, why didn't we just leave the road closure the way it was?
I don't think we knew that we were going to run into that kind of a problem. I think they were anticipating that they would be able to do some work, and I think based on some conversations with BSU about the waterline project, you, you should be seeing some construction going on there shortly.
Okay. But if, if they don't plan on doing construction shortly, can we have them retract the additional two blocks?
We can ask them about that. I think that's going to depend on when they think construction is going to kick back in.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable request on Mike's part there. If, if they don't project to be, let's say that they're going to start beginning of the week. There's no reason to have the road blocked off right now, I don't think. I mean, so I think that that's a pretty reasonable thing to, to ask for. Anyway, they're just signs, right? Barricades?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, okay, good. And, and will you, do you want Matt to check in with?
I'll follow up on it.
Okay, good. Thank you. Mike, you have anything else? Good. Pete, what do you got?
I'd like to once again compliment Mayor Kevin Ruane for his efforts, and let him know that I for one, and I'm sure the city stands with him, ready to continue to work on water issues. And good work, Kevin. Keep going. Second off, I know that we have a lot of veterans' events coming up, and we have some, boy, some really, really, I'm sure Steve, Councilmember Slack, who will follow up with that, but for any, for Veterans Day, if people are, I would anticipate participation in the events coming to town with the people, people that are here. Third thing I wanted to say, I look forward to the update on the high school. I know we've got some updates and some new information, so I look forward to hearing about that. I know there are some concerns. There will always be concerns, but I look forward to keeping that on the front burner, working with the current school, Lee County School Board, and I guess maybe at that point, the new members and the extended members. And Steve, you had asked about when PD's football game is. There's a lot of Benita Springs young men. I would say women, but there's actually no women on the team. Will be, they finished a perfect eight-no season, the Estero Mustangs, and they start their first playoff game this Saturday at two o'clock at Estero High School against Port Charlotte. So, so after the two o'clock game, I will be down for the fish fry and look forward to a great event down in the park this weekend. So, thank you.
Thanks, Pete. Let's go on down to Dr. Steve.
Thank you very much. Obviously, Riverfest this weekend, but I have two or three other things. New Horizons has taken a position and added value to the city because we don't have a social services department. New Horizons is based on taking at-risk kids, bringing them into stronger on the academic side and leadership side. The reason I'm saying this is for two, they recently received a $49,000 grant in order to expand the processes and the services they offer. So congratulations on that grant. More than that, we've done Government Day here in the city since I've been on council for the middle schools and the high school. And this year, after working with Carl, talking about the possibilities, we're also going to include New Horizons as one of the Government Days. So I hope people on council will be able to join us the days that New Horizons people come in. Congratulations to the Wonder Gardens and to John Pano, who had the first lecture series there a week ago Wednesday. He came as a pirate, scared the living daylights out of me, but, you know, he was John, and he was finest. And then finally, finally, we're taking on, this is the third year for the Estero High School Leadership Academy. This is our third group. They had session one. Thank you to the Lee Sheriff, Lee Sheriff's Department, the Benita Springs Fire District, and our own Frank Cassidy for showing these students, these 12 superior leaders in the school, what public safety is all about, and getting them started on understanding the infrastructure of, of a community. So thank you, Carl. Thank you all that you out there. It was a great day. And this coming Friday is our second session, where we'll do the environmental session, and environment includes going to BSU, looking at the wastewater treatment plant that creates zero environmental footprint, going over to the nature place, taking a tour, and ultimately ending up, oh, coming in, hearing about sustainability for the city, and ultimately ending up at the Florida Gulf Coast University Marine Science Center, where the students get in the water, dig out buckets of stuff out of the bottom, and have it analyzed. So thank you all for your support of creating our future leaders. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Janet, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you. It's, you know, one of those things, sad and glad to be home at the same time. I've had a wonderful vacation, so thanks. What I would like to say, and I haven't talked about, and Steve brought up the, the name Benita Nature Place, and you know, I have not ran my mouth about the nature place in a long time.
Sure.
I know. I know. So I thought today was a good day to do that. I was out and visited the nature place.
Did you like the intro?
I did. It was perfect. It was perfect. Thank you for, for setting that up for me. I went out yesterday, and the weather, first, thank you. It's been gorgeous. I brought that home from France for you guys. But the nature place, I wanted to say thank you But the nature place, I wanted to say thank you to staff. It looks amazing. It's doing well. There were four gopher tortoises out enjoying the sunshine as much as I was when I was walking around. But also, what I wanted to say, there was a family there having lunch at one of the picnic tables. Just made my heart feel good. So, just want to remind everyone that the nature place is there, and it's, it's looking great, and it's a wonderful place to take the family, go for a walk, and reconnect with nature. I wanted to thank the city's technical advisory board. They came to the Everglades Wonder Gardens for their meeting this week, and they're going to be making some recommendations to us on how to make ourselves better tech-savvy people over there. And I'm very excited about that, so I want to thank them for their time and coming over to do that. And Dr. Steve is liaison to that group, so thank you for doing that. Kathy McGrath does always, she's our city spokesperson. She did a great job talking about Riverfest. I just want to tell everybody, please come out. The duck race is always a blast. The fish fry is wonderful. And again, thanks to all the, the members of our community that make those kind of events happen. It's, it's really fun. And we're kicking off season with, basically with Riverfest. But another thing I wanted to mention is that we are kicking off season, and more and more folks will be coming back. And at this time, the Benita Springs Assistance Office can always use help with the pantry. You know, it runs low during the summer, and this is the time where lots of our families need help, especially through the holidays. So, any donations can be made there. They really, 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 you know, appreciate that, and that's a good thing to do. So, please buy your ducks, again, because they will be, the proceeds from the duck sales will be going to the not-for-profit Benita Wonder Gardens, so that's a good thing. And then I just want to say, our next lunch and lecture series on Wednesday, November second, please bring your lunch and come out and join us there. Our speaker will be Jen Hagan, and she'll be talking about the city's backyard hen project. So, we're excited about that, considering we've got quite a little group of hens there at the nature place, I mean, at the Wonder Garden, so thank you. Where am I?
The hens, the hens don't come for lunch.
In a happy spot on both ends.
My gosh.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Steve, be top.
I'll see you two o'clock at Estero, Ricky.
All right, buddy.
All right. The Rotary Club had a, on October fifth, had a golf outing and dinner at Sorrell's Restaurant. So, tonight at six-thirty, I'm very happy and honored to receive a check from Sorrell's Restaurant. They have donated year after year, but this year, they wanted to donate to veterans only. They want to continue to donate to the American Legion. So, I, I think this check will be substantial. I don't know right now how much it's gonna be, but it's substantial. So, Sunday, the twenty-fifth, at two o'clock, you, you might have heard or read about Damien, the three-year-old, the child that has no eye now, and the, and the tumor has metastasized. It only affects children between ages of one and three. And so, we're having a major fundraiser for October twenty-fifth, which is a Sunday at two PM to five PM, at the American Legion Post 303, which is on Imperial Shores Boulevard. I want to thank Greg for making sure that we had a big fire truck and all that, and their staff have been very supportive. Sheriff's Office, also our CPU unit. So, if you can get there. The reason why we're having the fundraiser is because he has to receive treatments, I don't know which one it is, chemo or radiation up in Jacksonville, and then also in Miami. So, they have to drive there. And right now, they both work, and they cannot, they're not getting paid. They're supportive of them, but they're not getting paid. They will have their jobs. So, what we're trying to do is help them out as much as possible. And they're both veterans. The mother and father are both veterans, so, and they belong to our post. So, appreciate any, any support you can give. Thank you.
See, first of all, when the, Carl's gonna have the opportunity to talk to all of you about the, the high school, the Benita Springs High School, the potential site there. I hope everybody, I hope we can go into this as a community and be supportive of this. I know that there's probably some tweaks that need to be done. I think there's a lot of things we can do to mitigate whatever effects might happen, but please keep an open mind. This is a really exciting time for the city of Benita Springs. It's unbelievable that we, that we would even be considered for a facility like this. I think it's just incredible. The same goes for the library, too. Carl talks to you about that. The Sam Vincent and Carl and everybody have done a great job on coming up with a really urban type of an environment. I think it's, it's a little frustrating mainly because I think that we are like right on the cusp, and we can only be told so many times that, "We're gonna build you a library. Yay! We're, you know, and everybody, yay!" Okay, when? So, so I think we're, we're right on the cusp of it, and it's very frustrating because there are a few, there are only a few details to work out. But I, and, and now I know they, they, they watched the city council meeting, so I'm talking to them right now. It's not that complicated. It's not that complicated, what we're, what we're wanting to do here. And I think that what we really need to do is we need to meet more often, and this isn't from our staff standpoint, because our staff is ready to meet every day with them. We need to meet more often than every four to six months. That's not gonna, that's not gonna get the job done. That's what's being very frustrating. And hopefully, I'm not hitting the beehive real hard with a stick here, but I'm just saying, we just need, we need to get on with this. I think it's to everybody's, everybody's benefit that we go ahead and get on with this. We've, there's a few items left that Carl will talk to you about. I don't think any of them are unworkable or untenable. Just need to do it. That's all. And I don't know what the reluctance is, or, or why, why it's, why it's a moving target backwards. I have no idea. But, but Carl, you'll, you'll talk to council about it, and we'll, we'll figure it out. The other thing, speaking of hitting beehives, your mayor was added again at the MPO meeting. And it's a little frustrating, I don't know about you guys, but it's a little frustrating when people start thinking that the re-prior, continually reprioritizing things kinda gets anything done. It doesn't. It just kinda switches things around. And we start talking about whether we're gonna have something done forty-five years from now or twenty years from now. Wow, that's helpful. Not, not at all. I mean, I know we're supposed to be looking out in the future, but when everything continually gets shuffled back, and after being on the MPO for fourteen years now, when you see these things start to turn over and start being continually shuffled back, that that's, that's the trend. At some point in time, I think Bill, Bill and anybody who's financially, you know, motivated, you can kinda do the math. If we continue to do that, if we continue to shuffle it back, at some point in time, the public, who has got to pay for this, at some point in time, in some manner, gets to a point where they can't ever do it. I mean, I mean, if, if you start taking a bite of the sandwich slowly but surely as we're going along here, then, then we can do this, and we can keep up with the infrastructure. But if we hamstring ourselves to a point that everything keeps getting shuffled back, it's like, it's like incurred credit card debt. That's, that's debt that's incurred because this infrastructure never gets going, and so it keeps being pushed back. And it gets to the point where you can never get caught back up. I don't want to see that to happen. So, if, that's what I've been trying to encourage everyone, not just the county commission. I think the city's been doing, I think we've been doing our part. And, and it was very telling when they said, when everybody got presented, presented their, their capital improvements projects list. Benita's was the only one that was fully funded. You know why? Because we're paying for it. I, I thought that was pretty, pretty telling. So, I think that that's kind of an example that I kinda wanted with the state, federal, everybody. If you want things, somebody has to pay for it, and I think it's got to be the people who use it predominantly. So, anyway, that's, that's the argument I've been making. It has been making very many people happy. A lot of people are quietly supportive of that, but quietly, too quietly in my mind. When it comes to the, the fracking deal, you're gonna be seeing a little bit from that. It's a rather frustrating thing. I, I'm trying, I don't want to get into a battle of words with a seated senator on, this is ridiculous. I, I'm not gonna let that happen, but, but I'm, I'm guided by, by your concerns and your objections to this. And again, to let you know, it's, I'm, every time the conversation steers one way, I'm driving it right back to the, "Look, this is, this is a land use deal. This is something we think we, we should be able to do." Regardless of whether there's a chance of it happening or not, it's just one of those things. It's what we do. We, we're about the quality of life in the city of Benita Springs, and if it smells bad, looks bad, it's loud, it's horrible, it's awful, we don't want it here. That's pretty much it. And so far as anything else, you know, we're, we're not treating it any differently. We spoke at the legislative delegation meeting up in Fort Myers and presented your legislative priorities. I don't know how they were represented, or how they were received, but they were received. And, and we'll see how that goes. We're gonna continue to work, and every signal I've been sending to the senator and our representative Rodriguez is that we are looking forward to working with them and, and hope that they can accommodate something within that, within that legislation. I think that, I think that there is a way to do this, so we'll, we'll keep at it. Looking forward to you helping us in that regard. The only other thing is, we got this strange request, and I don't know if I should talk about this or not, so I'm going to. And Carl, we got this, we got this email from the League of Cities, and I thought it was really peculiar. I don't know if you got copied on it or not, but, and it was for League of Cities, and it says, "Hey, municipal, to all municipalities in this, in Florida." And it said that, and I'm gonna paraphrase here, that we've had a request from the legislature, which means all of them, which it wasn't, from the legislature, that we want to know what your, what your election rules are, what your term, if you have term limits, and if you do what they are, and this whole bunch of questions about term limits. Our state legislatures want to know what our term limits are and everybody's term limits are. So, of course, I got, I kinda went, hmm. And so, I said, "Okay, I'd be glad to tell you that as soon as you tell me." Number one, when you say legislature, do you mean the actual legislature wants this, or is it a particular legislator? Or is it a group of legislators? I'd like to know that. And I want to know, why? Why do you want to know that? That may have been pretty presumptuous of me, but thought it was a fair question. And so, she, she told me, "Well, actually, it is a, a particular legislator that wanted the information." So, that's less impressive, right? And, sorry. And so, and she says, "I would hate to speculate as to why they want this information." Which I thought, "Well, good. That's terrifying." So, I, I don't know if this will go anywhere, but I just wanted to bring it up because if this is another attempt for the legislators to go into your home rule authority and decide that, let's say, I will speculate here, where somebody else want and wouldn't, is that if this is, well, we want to create some consistency. They're always about, we'd like everything to be consistent, whether it's fertilizer ordinances. We'd like everybody to be on the same page, all of you to be on the same page so far as your, how long that your officials stay in office. I kinda think that's none of their business. I don't know about you, but again, what? Why? Mind your own business. Sorry. Anyway, so I want to let you know, I don't know that that will, that may not get legs. This may be somebody just fishing around to look for something to do or something, but if it comes up, oh, boy. And jeez, that's all the good news I have right now. And let's see. Would you like to prove the minutes?
Who to prove?
Second.
Motion proven in a second. And any other discussion? Roll call. Hold on a second. I'll get the minutes done, and I'll come right back to you. Go ahead. Roll call.
Councilman Slaft.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longcart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Bill.
This is, has to do with the library. I probably shouldn't say. The one thing I've learned over eight years is that one must have patience. And I know how difficult sometimes that is for some of us. And dealing with the county commissioners, as we have over my term and since the beginning, they all come from different persuasions, but they're all well-intentioned people. And in this circumstance with the library and knowing how long it's taken to get to this point, thanks to your hard work, Carl's, and everybody else in terms of getting a library finally in the city of Benita Springs, I would hope we could be a little more patient, and I know that's easy to say, but I get it. And there's no one more than myself that understands we are, we should have what we're asking for, and it'll be a wonderful place for the people in Benita Springs when it happens, and I believe it's gonna happen. But it takes, you can't be all things to all people, and sometimes the county commissioners, in this particular case, I think they're also well-intentioned people, and no one knows, unless you practice empathy, how other people feel about a given subject, and I think that's why patience is a virtue. And I'm sure, and I'll be glad when we get the, that it's actually gonna happen, but we're, we're very close. I believe that, too. So, I thank you for listening. I just-
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other thing else from council before we go to public comment? No? Any member of the public wishing to speak on any city item, please come forward.
Yeah, Rick Steinmeyer, I think the mayor has the right idea on the zoning of this drilling. We don't need drilling in a fifty-square-foot mile or, inside the city. I don't think that's, could be used. The other question I have is, who owns the mineral rights, and how do you find out who owns the mineral rights? And are they for sale? In Pennsylvania, where, you know, they come around and they, they buy the mineral rights because they have coal and, and stuff up there, and it would go on the deed. I don't know how the mineral rights work down here in Florida. Whether Collier County owns all the mineral rights, where do they, where does that show up on, in writing? That's the question I have. And if it's possible, buy them. All right, thank you.
There you go. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Peter O'Flynn, Ben, as you were chatting, I was wondering, you were saying when Carl tells you, I guess, each one of the individual council members about the high school, obviously, a lot of us are very interested. You implied there may be some issue with respect to it that we might have to get over. I wonder if it's possible if Carl can actually tell the public, or if there's any particular reason why he would just be talking to each individual council member.
Okay. And, and it probably is a reason. We'll, we'll articulate that. How about that? Thank you. Thank you very much.
My comment is first on the landscaping, primarily on the landscaping in the median south of Benita Beach Road on New Forty-One. The, what's in the medium as far as palm trees is fairly sparse compared to what's south and compared to what's north. And I think, I know, you don't want to put so many that it obscures the vision to the businesses, but I think it could have, if you doubled the amount of palm trees in that stretch, it wouldn't be too many. And you could also, instead of having as much low planting, have some intermediate that goes up three or four feet with flowers and things like that on it. I wasn't gonna say this, but I will. A number of us went up to Lee County School Board last night and let them know that there was four thousand residents of Benita Springs that were very, anywhere from okay to enthusiastic about putting the high school at Benita Beach Road and Benita Grandy. We said, "You've taken that four thousand people that were enthusiastic primarily, and put them in a situation where they're, they're gonna put their time and their talents and their resources to doing what they can to see if we can't get this changed." Because you don't bring a high school in and put it right up against a community like Hunter's Ridge, real close to Worthington and real close to Quail West. When it was across the road, it was significantly different. Now, understand that that deal may have fallen apart because of multiple parcel owners and probably some of them getting greedy. The city should use their resources to make the deal work, but put it someplace where it's not gonna impact the people with all the sound, the confusion. It's gonna cost Hunter's Ridge one point two million dollars in damages. Now, is that what you do to people that have been here as taxpayers of this community for these years? And I would say this, if that was going in front of Benita Bay, Benita Bay would be here en masse. If it was going in front of Pelican Landing, they'd be in, in mass. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speaker? Please come forward.
Hi, for the record, again, Kathy McGrath. First of all, I want to confirm something, that lunch at Wonder Gardens. I know it's the first Wednesday. I might have heard wrong. I thought you said it was the second. It's the fourth.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. No, I just wanted to make sure. And the other thing I forgot to bring up was, ta-da, the Film Fest. I mean, the date for submission is over, and guess what? We have thirty-three entries this year. Isn't that exciting? It's gonna be bigger and better. Now, remember, it's on the fifth of November and at the Prado, and you have to buy your tickets online, I believe. Yes, they're not-
At the Prado.
At the Prado, yes. Please buy them at the Prado. And there's gonna be the red carpet, and, you know, November fifth, it's gonna be beautiful weather, nice evening. And wait until you see these entries. They're really gonna be exciting this year. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time? Please come forward. Seeing none. Carl? The, the question, before we adjourn here, the school board has communicated to you that they're not ready to unveil that officially, that? Is that, that's the reason? And you just wanted to kinda give the council a heads up?
That's correct. Yes.
And, and of course, it would be council, and you would include the candidates in that, too?
I wasn't going to, no, sir.
Wasn't going to? Okay.
I'm happy to do that, but at this point in time, councils being the ones I'm trying to focus on now.
Okay. And, and anyway, looks like a lot of people know anyway, right?
Apparently.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And council, anything else? Thank you very much. Meeting's adjourned.